... Like the circle of everything.
No, I heard. Seems like those things.
Well, that's the thing, just the city councilor in Seattle. Essentially, I think we need to do this here. The one thing here is in Seattle.
Okay. When you get here.
Or they take me out. They're like, oh, it's tough to be honest. It's more of a, you know.
If they can hear that, it's still hard. But like. Eric was like, he was like. Yeah.
So it's funny, we said that. Five, four, three, two. Yeah, I think they know. Yeah, they're just.
And.
So yeah, so. And like.
Yeah. All right. You're just one of these things. I told him. Um. Uh, here. There's getting toward. Doing a senior. No. Say. No. All right. And.
So they were putting the stores.
But I'm waiting.
It's not just for following.
All right. We think the most considerable member of the city council, everyone, please stand in front of the table.
What do we consider to the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands by my nation, on our ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Here, please stay until after the meeting is over. If you are here to speak on a public hearing, please wait and speak when the public hearing is announced. So I'm assuming we don't have any.
Nope.
Yellow cards, okay? All right, next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. Um, next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have public hearing number twenty-four, one, one, zero, four, zero. Madam Clerk, if you can, please read the public hearing.
Yes, sir. In accordance with section four oh five, one, three, five of the Forests and Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Forests at Missouri and the council chambers at nine fifty-five, Rose St. Francois, on Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P. M. on the following proposition. To amend B five ordinance number five, six, five, two, to allow for a sit-down carryout restaurant located at twenty-five seventy-five North Highway sixty-seven for M. A. J. A. C. Enterprises LLC Sweet Spot Cafe, or D. B. A. Sweet Spot, Sweet Spot Cafe. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact City Clerk at least five days before the said public hearing by calling eight three nine seven six three zero or email at cityclerk@forestsmoderca.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, is the petitioner present?
Yes.
If you can, sir, please come forward, state your name and your, your city of residence.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Mario Badra. I live in the city of Wauferham, Missouri.
Okay, so Mr. Badra, if you can, tell us about your project.
Uh, yes, we're planning on, um, opening a donut cafe. Like you said, located at, uh, twenty-five seventy-five North Highway sixty-seven. Uh, this is, um, an establishment that would be selling donuts, coffees, drinks, along with, uh, hot food, such as Philly steaks, burgers, things like that. I don't know how much detail you want, but.
More detail, I think, helps, uh, but we'll have some questions. So, uh, you did answer one question that I had, is whether it's just gonna be donuts, but you're doing also, uh, stuff. but you're doing also stuff for lunch and dinner.
That's right. That's right, yeah, we're planning on opening longer hours than just a typical, you know, morning, morning crowd.
Okay. And in looking at your application, I saw that your hours are there from eight till eleven P.M. Is that correct?
The morning hours should be five-thirty A.M.
Five-thirty, okay. And is it eleven o'clock?
Till eleven o'clock, yes.
Okay, is that Monday through Friday, Monday, I guess, every day you're open?
Most days, on Sunday, we would plan on closing early.
Okay.
So maybe around six.
All right, all right. All right, let's go on to some of the council members. They have some questions here. Let's go to Councilman Cyan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming tonight. I was going to ask how many stores you have. I know you have at least one, because my partner and I used to go to your store in Saint Anne, like, a long time ago. We haven't been there in a while, but do you have any others besides that one?
I do have one in...
Excuse me, Mr. Badra, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you can, pull your mic up a little bit so everyone can hear you a little bit better. All right, there you go, thanks.
Okay. Yes, I do have a store in O'Fallon, Missouri, along with the one that you've been to in Saint Anne.
Okay, very good. And how extensive are the, are you going to, well, let me ask it this way. What are you, are you planning to use the existing building that you have there? And like, how extensive are the renovations you're going to do to it?
Yes, the first floor of the building, we are planning on just renovating it probably from top to bottom.
Okay.
Yeah.
So not like, not like removing it completely, but just like using the existing building?
That's right, yeah, we're not, we're not planning on demoing the building itself, just on the inside, making it more pleasantly pleasing, and, you know, make it Sweet Spot.
Yeah, sure. How much seating will you have inside there?
I think when we did the plans, it was...
I wasn't able to tell.
If you can, pull that, I guess, push it forward so we can see on the, on the screen what you're looking at. There we go, thank you.
Twenty-seven? Okay, I was going to say thirty, so you're close. That's good. So, yeah, this, we have the booths lined up on this side, and tables...
Oh, I see it now, okay.
Yeah, tables will be, which is, this is not the final drawing, but there'll be some tables in this area right here as well.
Okay. Okay, and last question for, for now, at least. What kind of timeframe are you looking on it for? Are you looking at, like, when do you think, like, it'll be complete and ready to open?
Well, hopefully by January, February, the latest.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cyan. Next, we have Councilman Shildroth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Badra, for picking Forest and... Are you going to have a drive-through at all?
No.
Okay.
No, there's no drive-through.
Okay, do you plan on down the road, coming back to us and asking for a liquor license?
Liquor license? That's really not what Sweet Spot does. My other two locations, like, Saint Anne's been there for close to fifteen years, and alcohol wasn't. It just, I kind of wanted to make it more of a friendly family environment, so I didn't want to bring alcohol into the mix.
Great, thank you for choosing Forest and again, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shildroth. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Mr. Badra. I have not been to Sweet Spot Cafe. But I have been to Tony's, and I can have a feeling there's some relation there, so I think you come from a family of people who do this well.
Yeah, yes.
So I'm glad you're, glad you're looking at Forest and, good luck.
Thank you, thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Let's go to Councilman Kaputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Brown, how, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Mr. Kaputa, if we can have your, your mic a little bit. There we go.
Are you going to have any kind of other breakfast, other than donuts? Are you going to have, like, breakfast sandwiches?
Yes.
Bacon eggs, and...
Yes, I sure brought my menu, I apologize, but we have omelets. We have probably like eight or nine omelets on our menu, along with breakfast sandwiches, biscuits and gravy, country fried steak, platter, so there's quite, quite a bit of menu items.
Now, this will be served all day?
All day.
All day?
All day.
Basically, like, you're a diner that you're going to have?
Pretty much, yeah, you could come in at six in the evening and have biscuits and gravy if you want.
That sounds good, all right, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, sir, so I, I, thank you, Mr. Kaputa, I'm sorry about that. So you're also going to have a lot of carryout for your, your business, also?
Yes, we, we do have a, a big part of the business is, you know, our DoorDash drivers and deliveries, so... But we also, a big part of that also is our customers coming in, calling in on orders and ordering them online. So, yeah.
Um, the reason why I ask is sometimes we have issues with, with trash on, on a lot of businesses right there on Highway sixty-seven. We want to make sure that, I know your building is kind of, kind of sits on its own, on, on that property.
Yeah.
And it's not part of a strip mall, so do you plan to regularly, I guess, sweep the parking lot for, for trash?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, I have employees dedicated in my other location in Saint Anne. It's similar setup, and they're always out there, you know, swimming, cleaning, pressure washing.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I believe that's all the questions that I have here. All right, before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this public hearing? All right, seeing no further comments, Councilman Cyan moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Councilman O'Donnell. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, that motion carried, and this public hearing is closed. Thank you so much, Mr. Badra.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is old business. The first item is bills for second reading. We have bill number one-zero-zero-one-eight. Councilman, Councilman Parsons moves for a second reading, seconded by Councilman Harris. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, Madam Clerk, if you can, read the bill for the second time.
Ordinance amending, ordinance number eighty-four zero-six, as amended, which establishes the wage, wage range and pay plan for unclassified employees and effective date clause.
All right, Councilman Parsons moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Kaputa. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk, if you can, please read the bill for a third time.
Ordinance amending, ordinance number eighty-four zero-six, as amended, which establishes the wage range and pay plan for unclassified employees and effective date clause.
All right, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Yes, sir. Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Bill number one-zero-zero-one-eight passes and becomes ordinance number nine-zero-one-six. All right, next, we have bill number one-zero-zero-one-nine. Councilman Parsons moves for a second reading, seconded by Councilman Kaputa. Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk, please.
Ordinance repealing, ordinance number eighty-eight forty-two, establishing a new compensation plan for part-time employees of the city of Forest and containing an effective date clause.
All right, Councilman Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman O'Donnell. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance repealing, ordinance number eighty-eight forty-two, establishing a new compensation plan for part-time employees of the city of Forest and containing an effective date clause.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Bill number one-zero-zero-one-nine passes and becomes ordinance number nine-zero-one-seven. Next, we have bill number one-zero-zero-two-zero. Councilman Parsons moves for a second reading, seconded by Councilman Egan. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance repealing, ordinance number eighty-nine sixty, establishing a grade and step schedule for uniform employee positions within the city of Forest and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance containing an effective date clause.
All right, Councilman Kaputa moves for a third reading, seconded by myself. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance repealing, ordinance number eighty-nine sixty, establishing a grade and step schedule for uniformed employees positions within the city of Forest and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance containing an effective date clause.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Yes, sir. Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Bill number one-zero-zero-two-zero passes and becomes ordinance number nine-zero-one-eight. Next, we have bill number one-zero-zero-two-one. Councilman Parsons moves for a second reading, seconded by Councilman Cyan. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance amending, chapter one-two-five Personnel, Article Two, Classification of Positions, Section one-two-five-zero-six-five, Wage Increase and Schedule, by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it.
Okay, Councilman Parsons moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Harris. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance amending, chapter one-twenty-five Personnel, Article Two, Classification of Positions, Section one-two-five-zero-six-five, Wage Increase and Schedule, by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Bill number one-zero-zero-two-one passes and becomes ordinance number nine-zero-one-nine. Next, we have bill number one-zero-zero-two-two. Councilman Parsons moves for a second reading, that's seconded by Councilman O'Don, O'Donnell. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance repealing, ordinance number eighty-seven forty-six, establishing a grade and step schedule for full-time classified positions within the city of Forest and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance containing an effective date clause.
Councilman Parsons moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Shildroth. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance repealing, ordinance number eighty-seven forty-six, establishing a grade and step schedule for full-time classified positions within the city of Forest and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance and containing an effective date clause.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Yes, sir. Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
I mean, sorry, O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes. Bill number one-zero-zero-two-two passes and becomes ordinance number nine-zero-two-zero. Next, we have bill number one-zero-zero-two-three. Councilman Parsons moves for a second reading, seconded by Councilman Egan. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance to amend, Title Two, Chapter two-four-five Parks and Recreation of the Forest and City Code, Section two-four-five-one-eight-zero, fees for use, to adjust fees for use of various park facilities.
Councilman Parsons moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Kaputa. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance to amend, Title Two, Chapter two-four-five Parks and Recreation of the Forest and City Code, Section two-four-five-one-eight-zero, fees for use, to adjust fees for use of various park facilities.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Bill number one-zero-zero-two-three passes and becomes ordinance number nine-zero-two-one. Bill number one-zero-zero-two-four. Councilman Parsons moves for a second reading, seconded by Councilman Shildroth. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance to amend, Chapter two-four-five Parks and Recreation, Article eleven, Old Forest and Golf Club, subsection two-four-five-six-one-zero, fees and charges to adjust fees for golf course facility.
Councilman Shildroth moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Kaputa. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance to amend, Chapter two-four-five Parks and Recreation, Article eleven, Old Forest and Golf Club, subsection two-four-five-six-one-zero, fees and charges to adjust fees for the golf course facility.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Yes, sir. Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Bill number one-zero-zero-two-four passes and becomes ordinance number nine-zero-two-two. Okay, the next item on the agenda is new business. The first item under new business is board appointments. Councilman Shildroth, you have something? Okay. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish to appoint Anita Jackson from Ward Five to the Arts Commission.
All right, there was a motion to approve their appointment by the mayor, which was properly seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? That appointment is made.
Thank you, I got one other one. I wish to appoint William Switzer to the Emergency Management Commission from Ward Nine.
Any motion to approve?
Make.
Motion to approve by Councilman Egan, we have a second. Seconded by Councilman Kaputa. All those in favor? All those opposed? The appointment is made.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Next item on the agenda are, is requests. Councilman O'Donnell moves to accept the application to transfer special use permit number, okay, there's no... Number seven-nine-eight-two from Marty Consilla to Clement Florissant LLC doing business as Clement Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Florissant for a vehicle sales and service agency located at nine-five-five North Highway sixty-seven. That's seconded by Councilman Cyan. Any discussion? Okay, Councilman Egan?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and call the petitioner forward.
All right, Councilman Egan moves to suspend the rule, seconded by Councilman Kaputa. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, most rules are suspended. If we can, have the representative from Clement come forward. Please state your name and...
Jason Jordan. Good evening.
Good evening. Councilman Egan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, sir. I just have a couple of quick questions on that property that you're taking over there. That, there's a fence line that kind of backs up to one of our best parks, St. Ferdinand Park. Do you have any intention on cleaning that up, maybe replacing that fence?
Absolutely. There's, there'll be some enhancements to the fence, the privacy area, as we're starting to go through that process of freshening it up, both locations. That is in the works, and that's something we actively want to, want to do. As you can tell, Mr. Clement does top-notch stuff, and he has that expectation for both of these locations.
That is very good to hear, that's all I have, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Councilman Egan. Have any other questions here? Okay, all right. All right, so the, the motion was properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, that motion is carried, and the application is accepted. Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is resolutions. We have resolution number one-zero-six-three. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, can you read the resolution?
Resolution of the City of Florissant, City Council endorsing the St. Louis County Grant, County's Grant Program for the city's waste reduction efforts.
Okay, Councilman Parsons moves for a second reading, seconded by Councilman Kaputa. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those against?
Resolution of the City of Florissant, City Council endorsing the St. Louis County's Grant Program for the city's waste reduction efforts.
Councilman Parsons moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Harris. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Before the final vote is, I'm sorry.
Resolution of the City of Florissant, the City of Florissant, City can't get a little...
I'm sorry.
endorsing the St. Louis County Grant Program for the city's waste reduction program, uh, efforts.
Easy for you to say.
Right.
Before the final vote is taken... Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this resolution? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Yes, sir. Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Resolution number one zero six three passes. The next item on the agenda is bills for the first reading. We have bill number one zero zero two five. Madam Clerk, can you please read the bill?
An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into an agreement with St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners to allow for Officer Hale, Officer Andrew Hale, to serve as an instructor for, at the St. Louis County Police Academy.
Council, okay. Councilman Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by Councilman Caputa. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those against? Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into an agreement with the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners to allow for Officer Andrew Hale to serve as an instructor at the St. Louis County Police Academy.
Councilman Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Shildroth. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Madam Clerk, reading for a third time, please.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into an agreement with the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners to allow for Officer Andrew Hale to serve as an instructor at St. Louis County Police Academy.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Yes, sir. Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Uh, bill number one zero zero two five passes and becomes ordinance number nine zero two three. Next we have bill number one zero zero two six. Madam Clerk, can you please read the bill?
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a contract for the sale of the portion of the property located at lot eight of nine eighty Route St. Francois to Stephen and Gina Seade.
Bill number one zero zero two seven, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B five ordinance number five six five two to allow for a sit-down carryout restaurant located at twenty-five seventy-five North Highway sixty-seven for M A J C Enterprises LLC DBA Sweet Spot Cafe.
Bill number one zero zero two eight, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer special use permit number seventy-nine eighty-two from Marty Consilla DCJR to Clement Florissant LLC DBA Clement Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Florissant for a vehicle sales and service agency located at nine five five North Highway sixty-seven.
Bill number one zero zero two nine, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance to amend Title Five Building and Construction Article Three Residential Code Table R three zero one dot two Climatic Geographic Design Criteria by changing the requirement for an ice barrier underlayment for roofing.
Councilman Caputa moves for a second reading, seconded by Councilman Egan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those against? I'm sorry. You have a little discussion here, so Councilman Shildroth?
I do have a question. Mr. Hughes, I guess you could answer it? So, I wanna get a new roof at my house. And what do we have presently on the books that addresses this issue?
Currently, we require underlayment underneath the shingles. We do not require the ice barrier that is in the code as optional depending upon geographic location.
Okay. Do you know, ballpark, what that cost would be?
Uh, the added cost, I don't know what the added cost is right now. That would be something I'd have to ask somebody what the cost is. Basically, it's a three-foot extra barrier of underlayment at the eaves of the houses. It is there to protect houses from cold weather ice buildup at the eaves, so that if it does, if ice were to get back up underneath your shingles, it would not damage the roof structure underneath.
Do most subdivisions in the area excluding Florissant have this with new construction, do you know?
Um, there are, it's kind of hit or miss. There are some municipalities that have it, some that do not.
Okay. Would this affect the McBride development in any way?
Uh, no, the exception, there is an exception in there for buildings built after January first, twenty twenty.
Okay. Does anybody, Jeff, Joe, do you know by chance the cost?
I don't.
No, I do not. No, I do not know.
I'm not saying it's not a good...
Material cost is about a hundred dollars.
Okay. I'm not saying it's a bad ordinance to have. I just don't wanna get a phone call two months from now saying, "Hey, I got a roof and I got a permit for it and the guy's charging me X more now 'cause you guys passed this ordinance," you know?
Right.
I'm just trying to...
Material cost is very minimal. It's, it's about a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars worth of material. So you figure labor on that, usually you double it, so maybe three hundred dollars.
Okay. All right.
Additional cost.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Shildroth. Uh, don't go anywhere yet, Mr. Hughes. Not getting off that easy. Um, I mean, Mr. Shildroth made a, a good point. He's asking about the cost and leading into that, if we have somebody, a resident, who needs to have their roof replaced because of hail damage, is, is this something that most insurance companies would, would cover? Or will people have to pay that out of their, their pocket?
Uh, most insurance companies would cover this, yes.
Okay, you're certain about that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Because, like I said, it, it protects the substructure, so the roofing structure and that matter. So right now, if you don't have it, there is a possibility that the insurance company would then have to pay for roof sheeting at the edge that if they had this ice shield, they would not have to pay for.
Okay, gotcha. All right, that's good to hear. Councilman Syam has a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to be clear, I just got a new roof this past April. It doesn't affect that, right? I mean, this is for...
Yeah, this, this is not retroactive, no.
Okay, that's what I, I thought it was the case, but I just wanted to...
Yeah, we're not gonna make them tear off your roof and redo it. No, that's, that is not...
It always comes down to what, how it affects us. Okay. All right, Councilman Harris?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna add that I just had a new roof not that long ago. And actually, the contractor said that they thought it was required already, and so they added it on there and the insurance paid for it. It was no problem, so... Uh, I was surprised to know that it's, wasn't required, so. No problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Harris. Um, I gotta figure out where we were. Okay, we had a motion for a second reading by Councilman Egan, I believe, and seconded by Councilman Caputa. We had our discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you read the bill for a second time?
Yes, sir. Ordinance to amend Title Five Building and Construction Article Three Residential Code Table R three zero one dot two Climatic Geographic Design Criteria by changing the requirement for ice barrier underlayment for roofing.
Councilman Caputa moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Egan. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please read the bill for a third time?
Ordinance to amend Title Five Building and Construction Article Three Residential Code Table R three zero one dot two Climatic Geographic Design Criteria by changing the requirement for ice barrier underlayment for roofing.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes. Bill number one zero zero two nine passes and becomes ordinance number nine zero two four. Next, we have a motion to cancel the second meeting in December, of course. It's on the twenty-third and near the Christmas holiday. I guess Councilman Parsons makes a motion which is seconded by Councilman Shildroth. All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is council announcements. Councilman Egan is up first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thursday, Wednesday night will be the thirty, thirty-seventh Annual Guns and Hoses Metro Boxing Showdown. We wanna wish all the fighters that are fighting for a very good cause, both on the, the police side and on the firefighter's side. All the proceeds go to Backstoppers, which does a great, great job in this community. If you have not gotten your tickets, there's still a handful available. It's my understanding that our own Dusty Chandler is going to be fighting in a heavyweight bout, so we wish Dusty the very best of luck and go Blue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Egan. Next we have Councilman Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and, um, special happy Thanksgiving to our military that is on deployment, that are in foreign countries and in harm's way. Wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. To all the Marines who perform F I. And, um, everyone in the city, have a good Thanksgiving, especially looking forward to this weekend, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Caputa. Doesn't look like we have any more council announcements, so let's move on over to the message from our mayor.
Thank you. So November fourth and fifth, the city of Florissant experienced record-breaking rainfall with eight inches falling within twenty-four hours. And we had a lot of residents were devastated with sewer backups in their basements. And so tomorrow night, right here in the council chamber from six to seven at City Hall here, we will have a resource and support fair for our residents that were devastated. We'll have representatives from our City Engineering Division, Community Development and Metropolitan Sewer District here to hopefully answer all your questions and hopefully help you out. The other thing is, is that the Florissant Emergency Management Organization Commission is looking for members. The commission is made up of nine persons, one from each of the city, nine wards, for residents of the city. And so if you're interested in serving as a three-year term, contact Steve Michael at the Police Department at three one four eight three zero six oh four two. And then this Saturday, we will have our kickoff to our Christmas celebration, Merry Christmas Street. There'll be a lot of activities here at City Hall and at six, right after the golf cart parade at six o'clock, we will light the tree and begin our Christmas holidays. And I do wanna wish everybody happy Thanksgiving also. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Lowry. Um, the next regular meeting for the City Council will be on Monday, December ninth. You don't wanna miss that meeting. That's when the council exchanges gifts and we, we say Merry Christmas to everyone or Happy Holidays and we all get to see Councilman Syam in his colorful sweaters at that time, so. Councilman Harris moves to adjourn the regular meeting, seconded by Councilman Syam. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, this meeting is adjourned.